It's six o'clock, so we'll get our meeting started. And there's three agenda additions. One is executive session for personnel. One is paving bids and concrete color for the Kingsley Bridge, the abutments. When anybody entertained making the motion.
Well, that we accept the changes to the agenda.
Mister Chairman, the executive session, can we actually put that into like fifteen minute session only? And at the end of the meeting?
Yeah. That's the best time that to do many how the agenda meetings.
I'll make that amendment.
One second. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? I'd ask for a motion to accept the May twenty ninth meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Cash, is there anything under highway?
Or um. Now, what about the executive session?
Yeah, we're gonna do executive session. He said he's gonna do it at the beginning of the meeting. No, it's uh. No, Cash said he wanted to do it at the beginning of the meeting.
Only problem is then they were holding.
It's only fifteen minutes.
Oh, it's alright. Before we had issues because of the PAC TV. Alright, then if that's the case, make a motion going to executive session for personnel.
So moved.
For fifteen minutes only.
Right, for fifteen minutes. Second? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Make a motion, come out.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Yes.
Alright, alright.
Mister Chairman, I guess just for the record, we need to state that we had a couple personnel items that were brought up tonight. Some inter-employee relationship type things we need to have a further discussion about. Uh, and some personal personnel issues that we're gonna have, that were made, the board was made aware of, so.
Yep.
And that's all we really can say right now.
Alright, paving bids, we have three right here. Wanna open one? I'm gonna pass this to Art.
You probably didn't want to open it.
Well, I did think so. All the same information was given out to all these contractors, right? So.
It's gonna be all the same number.
Hmm? Somebody's really got some glue on this one.
Good.
Alright, which, which one of you guys is Wilk? Wilk doesn't get it.
Mister Ted Rice.
Oh, hey, there you go.
Ew. I think we're duct tater.
Okay. So.
What, sir?
I gotta do some math, so I'll get back to you in just a minute with this one.
What do you got there, George?
About the total bid price?
Yes.
Okay, total bid price that I have, it's from Pike. And the total price is two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-two hundred and thirty cents.
Alright. Do you have a mileage thing on that?
Uh, how many?
Their footage.
Footage, uh.
Around forty-four hundred plus the thirty.
Where is it gonna be? My eyes are full as well.
What's that?
The unit price, the price per ton.
Yeah.
Eighty-four nineteen.
Thank you.
And that's for everything, Cash?
That's uh. Yeah, that includes shoulder gravel.
Are you got any totals?
Yeah, the, the overall total is two sixty-five, nine forty-one.
Who is that?
With Wilk.
Okay.
And I, it's seventy-four fifty for the asphalt mix per ton and sixteen dollars for the shoulder gravel.
How much for the reclaim?
Dollar and a half.
What was the total again?
Two sixty-five, nine forty-one. And I just did Mister Fuller's total, uh, which comes out to two sixty-three, nine sixty-seven and fifty-five cents with a per ton price of seventy-seven eighty-five, ten dollars um for the shoulder gravel, ten dollars uh unit price and reclaim price of a dollar square yard.
Is it shoulders per ton or per yard?
Per yard.
Per yard. So based on, so Wilk and Fuller are pretty, pretty close.
Yeah, they are.
Yep. And I for one appreciate all the bids and we've worked with both of you, so thank you for continuing your relationship with the town. We appreciate both of you. Um, and I would go ahead and make a motion that we accept the Fuller sand and gravel bid.
Is there a second for discussion?
One second.
Is there any further discussion? Um, before we vote, do you have any comments?
Do you wanna see these?
I haven't seen them.
All in favor of the motion?
Blue on the envelope.
All, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Looks like Mister Fuller.
Thank you.
When do you, when do you think he could start?
You got any culprits or anything?
This one by Nora forgot to figure out.
I guess the biggest thing is you gotta get the paperwork from the state on the um grant, the actual.
The actual, it's under, this under continuance of the final paperwork from the state, retrans.
Yeah, so. I mean, we're, we're doing a couple of weeks if you guys got your paperwork from the state.
We can't start to go at first.
Right, yeah, we'll do just a couple of weeks.
It's not that far away.
Pike's number, I have a reclaim for its item in that, for square yard.
Great, thank you.
Pikes? Oh, you want Pikes?
Yeah, eighty-four nineteen, including, that was for mix and shoulders combined.
Uh, two hundred and eleven ton for the shoulder gravel and at twenty dollars ton.
I'm with the reclaim.
Yeah, reclaim was ninety-seven cents.
Thank you.
There.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Was hoping we'd do it again this year, but.
Yeah.
They're close.
Yeah, that's a tough business, isn't it?
Yeah, some nights, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Um.
Yeah, it's sitting there, it's like it's back on the end.
The concrete painting over the Kingsley Covered Bridge, we did mention that we wanted the dark gray color, but he wants something in writing, so. So Ashley has written something up, Town Council approves the color, I'll just fill that in. Every, we all talked about it last time, dark gray.
Yep.
Alright, and uh, do we wanna make a formal motion on it?
And you sign it on behalf?
Yes, I'll sign it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the letter that states dark gray is the color for Kingsley Bridger, Kingsley Covered Bridge Concrete, that's a mouthful, and have the board chairman sign it on behalf of the board.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Cash, do you have any uh, anything else you wanna?
Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah.
Uh, we're just finishing up Windy Lane. We had quite a project over there and actually today finished it up, last cover, uh, culvert to install and that get done. Um. More tractor, still hasn't fixed, actually we're gonna bring it down to the garage and change fluids to see what we can do about getting it going. Also reached out to Joe Davis about the possibility of just giving a price. If we can't get our mower tractor going right now, of a one pass around town and on the intersections. This.
So you're gonna undertake to try to fix it, is that what I understand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And house here, I did, personally took it through, it's been sat there all winter and he ended up nothing.
And guess it's done. Anything else, Cash?
I believe that's all I have.
Alright, uh, I'd ask for approval of the May twenty-ninth minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
One second.
Alright, all in favor of the motion, please say, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Just for the record, I'm gonna recuse as I was not here for that meeting.
Yeah. We missed you, buddy. Hey, George, you gotta sign that too. Okay, approval of the select board morgues, they're already.
Oh, right there, they're right here in front of me.
I have not seen them yet, if they wanna make their way this way.
Yeah. You saw them, right, Cash?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Guests, you have any guests? Alright, uh, old business, Greg Knapp.
He's on here.
Craig's back there, yeah.
So I.
Oh, he's hiding back there, okay.
You mean, what you got going, bud?
I don't know if I like the word, oh, oh, but um, I'll deal with it. Um, well, as most everybody knows, I was here last, for the last meeting regarding North Shrewsbury Road and the increased traffic and the fact that the traffic has increased not only in numbers, but also in terms of speed. So I, first of all, appreciate having, having the opportunity to talk about it with you folks um, last time, and I appreciate the opportunity to do it again today. Um. My understanding at the time was that there would be some increase, some efforts to increase police presence and I understand that that's occurred. Um, actually, I happened to run into Corporal Graham, Cram, excuse me, on the way down the meeting. Delivered, um, and so we had a nice conversation. On the other hand, I'm curious as to what additional conversations might have occurred or what additional actions might have occurred in regard to signage. I understand, Cash, from your comment last time, that you didn't feel that this is, that hidden drive signs were necessarily appropriate. And I appreciate your perspective on that. Uh, on the other hand, I don't, I don't think that that should be the determining factor. I have to tell you the, um. As I said before, I lived there for forty-two years. The traffic there used to be fine, I never brought it to the board, but it's not fine anymore. It's faster and it's more common, you know, and it's not, not just the cars, as we know, there's construction vehicles that go up there. There's eighteen wheelers on that road. I checked today earlier, from Ken Gallows' house coming up the hill. Now, if you're in a truck, you've got a higher plane of visibility. If you're in a car and you're at Ken Gallows', which is next to Mark's, um, true name, you can't see either the upper driveway of Mark's house or my house, the drive from my house. And if you're sitting in a car in my driveway, you also can't see cars that are coming up the hill by cameras. It takes a matter of about three or four seconds going thirty-five miles an hour to get from that location to our driveway. It's not okay.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Would it be, would it be possible for the Sheriff's Department to take a look at that situation and give us some advice as to what they think? If it's a possibility that a sign is needed there?
I can obviously, I'm more than willing to take a look. Um, and I'm obviously not an engineer or anything like that, I can take a look at it from just traffic crash experience and try and, and give an opinion, um, but that would be all that is, is strictly a non-binding opinion. I could do that, and I could bring our, our highway safety coordinator Lieutenant Gino, who has a few more years in the field than I do, and have him take a look at that as well and see.
I appreciate that.
That would be great, yes. Will you just give us a, a written report?
I can, uh, what's, what's the address where, I know you said North Shrewsbury.
Yeah, there's multiple addresses, my address is six forty-six North Shrewsbury, we're directly across the street from the Church of the Latter Day Saints.
Okay.
And I believe a many years past, it hasn't been such an issue until now the speed, the volume of traffic has started.
Since, especially since they've been working on seven.
Well, I mean, it started, it started, as I mentioned last time, ten years ago with, with uh.
Irene.
Uh, Irene, and you know, because it was a, it became the major thoroughfare with the bridge out. But that, okay, that's ancient history, but the population may have decreased, but as I said last time, the traffic hasn't, and they certainly aren't getting slower. I know Ashley has looked, Ashley, I know that, uh, there was an inquiry about the electric sign, which I understand that's three, four thousand dollars, I think that's what I heard. Um, and I think that would be ideal if it's possible, but hidden drive signs, we need more, we don't need one, we need two. We need one coming up the hill and one because it's also.
Yeah, on the sharp turn, where you have.
Coming down.
Down, yeah, that's right. Um, but at least when you come around the curve, you can, you've got better visibility. But coming up the hill, you don't. So I'm, I'm here again to ask you to take some serious consideration, and I appreciate, I know Kevin, and and be happy to have him come out and take a look.
Have you been having any sheriff sit up there, deputies?
Uh, we have been trying to increase in several of the main complaint areas, um, I can't tell you that Corporal Cram, please don't quote me on the number, but in the last sixty to ninety days, I think he's had no less than five criminal speed arrests right around the corner there on Cold River, um, kind of between North Shrewsbury and the town line of speeds thirty-five to fifty-five miles over the speed limit, um.
Have you, uh, any thoughts about where you're putting that radar machine?
The speed cart?
Yeah.
Um, I, that is being run by Lieutenant Gino, I, I'm not sure where he's at on that at the moment.
We'll get some information.
I can, I can touch base with him on that as well.
And as far as those hidden driveway signs are concerned, you'll, you'll take a look at that for us.
I'll take a look at it.
And I'd like, if possible, feet come down, I'd like to be involved in that.
Okay.
If you might give me that back here, this is definitely way too much.
I, I, excuse me, I don't even interrupt, but I'd like for somebody to sit in my driveway, in a car, and then look down, take, look to the left and see how many cars you can see over the hill.
You're saying I'm looking downhill, is that right?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Speed's the biggest factor.
Yeah, especially on that short.
We've been working up there, it's crazy.
Yeah. I, I think we gotta have a little bit more patrol and done, speed bumps.
I say, we're, we're, we're doing, and it's like, I know we've had this conversation before.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's not just a, you know, in this area or just those back roads. Um, you know, same thing, he's been down in Wallingford area, and even on the four lanes, it's probably almost weekly where he's getting somebody ninety, ninety-five plus heading into the village of Wallingford from the four lanes to the two. You know, and they're just, every, the speeds are, ever since COVID, they've gone up and they have not come back down.
I'd point out that there is one speed bump on North Shrewsbury. It's called the railroad tracks. And, uh, and so people do, most people do slow down for that and then they make up for it, come off the hill.
Two weeks ago, I was going that way towards Shrewsbury, and this guy came down with a pickup truck, and I'm, he was flying, and he hit that railroad track and his rearview mirror come off the side of his pickup truck. He had a blue, it was a dark blue or gray colored pickup truck, had the, you know, loud exhaust on it and stuff.
I do uh, use that road from time to time, I have a daughter that lives near the hospital, and for me to come back, it's just as easy to drive that way. It's a more pleasant drive. And coming down that hill, I remember at one point, uh, one time, somebody passed me, which I thought was ridiculous. But it does happen, apparently, and.
Soon as we get some information.
Changing speed signs, I don't think helps, if people wanna speed, they're gonna speed, period.
Well, that worked pretty great, and soon as we get some information from the sheriffs, then we'll get you in the loop there and.
That's fine.
See what we can do.
Alright?
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you for coming.
And thanks for your support.
Only support when something happens.
Well, the idea is to be proactive.
Yeah.
For the cause.
Alright, anything else on that topic? New business, childcare, payroll tax. Wanna speak to that, Heidi?
Sure. So Act Seventy-Six, Stan Vermont has instituted that their new payroll tax become effective July first, and the town has two options, um, so this is the Vermont Child Care Contribution. Your first option is to have the point four-four percent um paid for by the town in its entirety, and the second option is up to one-one percent by the employee with the remainder of up to point three-three percent uh by the town. I have been keeping an ear in the ground to see what other towns in the area are doing, and because it's a small, such a small percentage, so far anyways, um, most towns are, um, have decided to pay the full point four-four percent and not have an employee deduction, um, but leaving it open-ended for that, if that ends up increasing by the legislature, then they'll revisit it to see if there should become an employee contribution. Yes, George?
That percentage is on, what, a yearly total payroll or what?
The percentage would be deducted after, with every payroll that we run and paid to the state, um, on the monthly.
Got it.
And reported on quarterly, so I did give you a, um, a packet that has all you would possibly wanna know about this. Yeah, so I just need to know, starting July first, what you would like me to do.
Do you have a recommendation?
Um. Because it is point four-four percent, less than a, a one percentage point, I, I would say it, it wouldn't be a huge burden um for the town to take that on, but I would also be mindful to keep watch of it, um, to see if that increases and then revisit it like the other surrounding towns are doing.
So we should be.
Five year too.
We should be able to revisit it every year at budget time, right?
You absolutely can, yes.
Yeah.
The state, the state is sticking their toe in, and when they finally take the cannonball and jump in on this, it's like we're gonna wanna be prepared.
Well, you're getting the same thing at your pitch.
Yeah, and the initial conversations we've had is at least for start, for starters, we're covering it, but for the most part, like everybody, we know that this is just the tone, that this is just the beginning, because they're not gonna leave this alone. They, they found another revenue source, which is what they've been desperately trying to do for.
Yeah, and at the same time, we can't get folks in the backyard to think about having tuition for all the students, which really irritates me.
That's another conversation for sure.
Right. I, I would go ahead and make the motion that we, for this start, the town takes it on. However, again, I want the record to clearly state that we are leaving it open-ended for future, but if it increases beyond what we deem reasonable, that we're gonna be revisiting it.
So with the example, didn't wanna interrupt, the example I have here is like fourteen thousand two hundred dollars, and you multiply that by the forty-four, it becomes sixty-two dollars forty-eight cents, that a.
That's what we're gonna.
That's for the year.
That's for, if somebody made fourteen thousand dollars a year, that's what you would pay a year.
And that's per.
Employee.
Per employee.
Yep.
Wow. Yeah, but we can only do, we can only change it if we wanted to, to, what, three point?
You're only allowed to do like point one.
You're only allowed to do up to point one-one, charge the employees.
So do your math on fourteen thousand and multiply it by point one-one, and that's all we're allowed to pull out of the employee anyway.
Which is not a huge amount.
Which is, yeah, it's, it's, it's so small, it's not, it's almost not worth, worth the paperwork.
Yeah, five dollars a year.
To, to pull, you know. Now, when it jumps and it's, you know, a significant portion, that's gonna be a different story.
Fifteen sixty-two. That's fourteen thousand. Yeah. That's for the year.
For the year.
And you gotta divide it up by, uh, because she gotta pay it every month, the paperwork is ridiculous. Every week. Well, she has to pay the state every month, but yeah.
You got a question here?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, the question is, it's, it's the, the real question is, what's the gross town payroll?
There you go.
And you're gonna be able to figure a dollar value for the actual, how much they're gonna put in your, their hand in your pocket.
I'd like to slap their hand. Yeah.
Wouldn't slap it too hard.
Uh-oh. She's looking.
She calculates.
She's looking.
He's pulling up the last town report.
Oh. Don't work. She's faster than I am. I thought it was, wasn't it seconded? No.
Was it? Did you second the motion?
There's a motion on the floor.
I'll second.
Either way, there's a second.
Uh, it's. It's around three hundred and fifty thousand.
Ah, I know you got a real number.
Times that, that forty-four times three hundred and fifty thousand. Fifteen forty.
For everybody, for the whole.
Fifteen hundred. Fifteen hundred and forty dollars. But the town has, the town has to pay three, three point something? Point three-three, so what's that, what's point three-three?
Yeah.
Twelve hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, one way or another, we're, we're in, on the hook for twelve hundred bucks.
Reaching in your pocket, as usual. Alright, there's motion on the floor, seconded, we've had some pretty good conversation. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Alright.
But I'll also note that I have a wife that's on the payroll, so I, I do have conflict. And so does Robert, and so does Cash.
Say, there's not much way around this one.
But, you know, to be, to be upfront and honest, we have, we, we do have conflict. Alright, Sheriff's Contract, wanna speak to that, sir?
Is this the upcoming or questions on previous?
Uh. Not necessarily.
Upcoming, correct?
Yeah, it's upcoming.
This is July one, right?
July one through June. July one through June.
Two thousand twenty-five, June thirty. So there's a new contract.
So I have not seen the new one, the sheriff doesn't usually give it to me until they come back, sign and agree upon in case there is negotiations, so I. I'm familiar with the general. What's generally included with them, so if you have some questions, I'd be more than happy to to answer them.
You can't negotiate?
I've got a question, but um. Says the town is billed for annual leave training hours per year. Training and SL at the established hour rate of the year end not to exceed twenty-five, twenty-five hours per year. If the town elects to have assigned deputies to shift bill on annual leave. Or training days, other deputies will be assigned at the additional regular rate of the fifty-one dollars forty-eight cents per hour. Does that mean that we as a town having you here, we have to pay for twenty-five hour minimum training?
Uh, it's usually not a minimum, it's an up to. Um, if there's training or things that are on their usual time, then there is a small portion that. Can be billed to the towns. I know that's uh addendum that the sheriff, to my knowledge, puts in most all of the patrol contracts.
So we have to basically pay for the keep certific- certifications up and stuff like that. That's per. Per sheriff working in the town.
It it would be so, it would be up to twenty-five hours to the town.
Well, is those hours subtracted from the contracted hours or is it above the contracted hours?
Says it's capped at eighty thousand, so.
It it would be, so say the total contract is fifteen hundred hours for the year. That twenty-five hours would be included in that fifteen hundred hours.
And the whole select board has to sign this too.
I would think it it'll fall into the built into the service already of the training. You know, I mean.
I can't, I can't speak for the sheriff cuz what he chooses to do is what he chooses. I can say historically, we generally try very hard not to use, to use very little or none of that. To the towns, we, s- majority of all those costs are still within.
Exor with your regular association.
It it's through our, our standard, through the department and not put onto the towns. Uh, but there have been some times where there are certain things where certain towns have asked for. A specialty service or something that may require training. So in something like that, they're like, if there is a training course to be certified to.
Something different.
Be an expert on, should these signs go up on this road and they can send me to that training. And that's something the town is requesting, then that would be something that the department may. Have the town pay for cuz it's a kind of a specific service towards it. Um, I know in the past, the sheriff has generally stayed away a lot from. Any of that kinda training to the towns specifically.
Well, here's a question, can you take a look at a last couple, three years and see if there's what incidents of this of this nature then? Go to us?
Uh, that, I don't know the bookkeeping system for me to take a look at that. I can try and look into, um, that might be a question.
We don't get an itemized.
Yeah, we do.
We do? Okay, that would be great.
That's not gonna be like an overnight thing.
Cuz I I can't say when we do our training, department trains every month and stuff, it's generally billed to the department, not to the individual towns.
Um, started across the other question I had, number three, I had, I'd never noticed it, maybe it was buried in the other contracts and I just never caught it, but. It says that a biweekly schedule will be established with the town. Is that new? Because I thought you guys just were kinda here upon availability.
Generally, there is some form of where, and it's oftentimes it's very informal. Um, such as I've done in the past where I've come in and spoken with the clerk, hey, where you having issues, things like that.
Where the complaints are.
With the board and it's just, we set up a schedule, if there's an issue or a specific need that the board needs. I know in the past, Mike has called me and said, hey, we're having this issue, can you shift some times? And we'll shift that.
So it's not like there's some signature page that's happening, okay.
We try to balance, cuz every town is different, we try to balance the town's requested needs with the deputies. Personal life schedule and and where the issues and needs are. I can give the board a general days and times of where the schedule is, if you would like, I prefer not to do that.
I would prefer not to have that on camera myself, but.
But I can give you where the schedules are, but obviously we also tend to change the times cuz we wanna give you some earlier coverage one day, some later coverage the next, so it does balance.
But we do, we do have a certain right to ask or suggest that a officer. Like for instance, is on the Alphicia Road. Cuz we're having some.
Is is what we do for specific things like that is you let me know the issue and what we'll do is we'll do a directed patrol and we will s- specifically make sure. Somebody is in that area, may not be every day or, but we will give some.
You work to cover the. Um, does the treasurer have any concerns contract wise now that you've had some time to look at it?
Um, no, not really. So I mean, I have a couple of comments I'll point out to you. I know that the contract this year says it's capped at eighty thousand. We did budget seventy-five thousand for the year. In the past, we've gone back to the sheriff to ask him to adjust that. But taking a look at where we were um last year's budget, we budgeted seventy thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and the actual came in at. Sixty-five nine twenty. This year, uh, we're budgeted seventy-three thousand and we're looking to come in about sixty. So the fact that we've already budgeted seventy-five and it's saying it's capped at eighty, I I just, when we were in budget, I remember the conversation that. Not wanting to budget eighty thousand dollars and come in at sixty and having unnecessarily raised twenty thousand dollars in taxes for the taxpayer. Um, so that's just something that we're gonna need to watch. Um, and I'll be monitoring closely throughout this upcoming year. To make sure that our coverage levels are good, um, but that we are not going to hopefully go over that seventy-five thousand. And if we do go over that seventy-five thousand, that um honestly, our fund balance can currently handle that one thousand dollar overage, so.
We'll take it out of the listers. It's good that, no comment, right, Marine? It's good that you explain that, so if somebody has a question, how come we do this or that and. It's on film, that's good.
And I can speak a little bit to that as well to kinda quell some of those fears, so uh, obviously we do biweekly. I am tracking the hours for all the towns. Every two weeks, I have a board, they're updated, I know whether we're over, we're under. So I flex that along with, which helps determine something. So if we get to a point where we're starting to see an overage. There are times where I'll either call the town, I'll call the select board, say, hey, we had some big cases, we had some stuff going on. Um, took a little bit more time than we planned, we're getting a little bit over. Do you want me to continue running at the stated hours? Do you want me to cut those back a few hours? And I'll let you guys tell me what you wanna do.
So far, we.
But I track that every two weeks.
We haven't had issues like that, though.
We have not and this year has been much lower, unfortunately. We had a uh separation of. Three different deputies, which left us in a bit of a lurch. So I have pretty much come out of my admin role completely. I am now assigned to towns myself as well on top of my admin duties as well. So, you know, I've even pulled myself kinda out of the office, back on the road full time and and assigned to two towns myself. Just to make sure that we're giving the towns as much coverage. The way things are looking, if everything doesn't go completely crazy, it's looking like by December, we should be pretty well back to. Full staff, right, where we could be to at least function reasonably on those contracts.
George?
Yes, um, if I understood correctly from Ashley, you uh, she had some difficulty making contact? Or did I understand that or did I get it wrong?
No, he cut, he got right back to me.
Thank you.
Alright, so this. So having, having heard the feedback, I will go ahead and make a motion that uh we approve the contract. And we all have to sign.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Are you hearing, um, all of them in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? I personally appreciate the work you guys. Yeah, you guys.
Yeah, thank you very much.
We're trying. There's never enough time, but we're trying.
Crazy world out there.
We have had some, some very, Corporal Cram has done some very good work and he's had some good cases here. I was actually speaking with her. Probably be seeing a press release tomorrow and one of the most recent ones from the wreck area down on seven B. So that was some trafficking level incidents that are still being wrapped up.
Wanna speak to the uh fireworks, I mean, the appointments for.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Done good.
Absolutely, thank you.
And David Potter, what are regional planning?
Regional planning commission?
All the regional plans.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, um, I think it's a reappointment for Bronson Spencer. Is it a reappointment for Dave Potter too? So I I would make a motion that we reappoint both the primary and the ultimate alternate in. Bronson Spencer and David Potter and have the select board chair sign that on behalf of the board. Yes, okay.
And we do not have. A second person on either of them, so it's just.
They're both primaries.
They're both primaries, one is for the traffic.
Oh, transportation. Alright, so I'll amend my motion and go back and just state for both primaries for transportation and the regional. Sorry about that.
He's still gonna second it. So all of them favoring motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Fireworks permit.
Who you got?
I don't know where the hell it went. This? Oh, yeah, okay. Jesus Christ, it's right in front of me. Here, read it. I gotta do all the signing.
Okay, so we have two of them. Um, we've got six ninety-eight Nipes Drive. Um, and this is for the fourth. And again, a reminder, we have very specific rules that they can't take place after ten o'clock, um, and that they must. Go for an hour or less. Uh, and the other one is uh twenty-seven thirty-seven Walker Mountain Road. Uh, my memory serves me right, we issued both of these last year and do not have any complaints. That's my memory.
Yeah, it's better than my memory. Wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the permits for the two aforementioned request for fireworks.
There's a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
That was, what was the, was that two weeks prior to?
They must be in two weeks prior. So.
Our meeting, no.
Um. Next meeting, well, there's, there, this is probably it then, cuz there. There won't be enough time next meeting. And um, I guess I'll state in my motion, another amendment, my apologies, or sorry, George, it's your, you gotta make a mo- you gotta amend your motion to state that the chairman signs it.
Sure, that'll be fine.
And I'm fine with it, my second.
Alright, all those in favor of the motion, lengthy as as it was, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Uh, now for discussion, we wanna uh. When we walk into the town hall, if you notice all the outside walls are really decaying, going to hell, so. I'd like to start a discussion about getting something done out there, painting or whatever.
Well, we've gone on a schedule and I know I brought it up multiple times that we're supposed to be getting two sides done a year and I don't think it's happened.
For a while.
In close to ten, so the question is.
Whole building needs to be painted.
The whole building's gonna be painted again, so.
But I have, I have an issue with this paint and paint and paint all the time. I know it's very expensive, but I think it's time to buy those sites.
At least get a price on it.
The problem is, a year ago, we got a price for vinyl siding and it was three times what it cost us to paint the building. I mean. What we had it, we had it roughly figured that, you know, at one point in time. I gotta get my job in. If we don't go with the highest bidder. It really costs only, I mean, I realize costs have gone up, but you could do a lot of painting on this place for. Six or eight thousand dollars. To make some, and if you did it over a couple of years, you're gonna be back in shape and then it's maintenance.
What do we have for maintenance of the building? Uh, Heidi?
Well, so you budget ten thousand dollars a year for building maintenance. Um, we spent two thousand this year so far. We do need a new furnace, we need a new hot water heater, we also would like to request an outdoor spigot.
I'm sorry, I missed that last one.
Outdoor spigot.
Oh, okay, got it, thank you.
Um, and you have for, your budget for next year is also gonna be ten thousand dollars, so you have money here. Um, and then there is the municipal buildings fund, which currently holds two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Well, that is also for big projects that come up and sinking fund for anything needed for the town garage, transfer station. For all municipal facilities, community center, once they are funded, so.
Have we pursued any prices on the furnace yet? I know that we were told it needed to be done, so where are we at with that?
So.
Dana, who does work on our furnace, is actually, he had suggested for us to switch to a propane furnace. And he is going to work with a propane company to see how much that would be. Um, we also had our energy audit done um in February and we're still waiting on some results from that. Um, and where we can go from there as far as grant wise goes, so there might be something coming up that would be available. For that, um. You know, it's really a.
I'm suggesting that what we do is right now, try and find some bids so that we have a little bit more of a.
So, speaking as someone who just pursued painting bids for a building, probably about this size. You are a year out.
It's.
The earliest you are going to get somebody on this building is July one, probably of twenty twenty-five.
Now.
Just speaking from experience, cuz I've been there, done it, just in the last six months.
At least it's a start.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying that if we're gonna pursue that, that's what you've gotta have because you're booking somebody now, twelve months out. And if they are available now.
You don't wanna.
You probably don't want, that's the best way to put it.
Let's start the process.
So I I don't have any issues with starting, you know, uh, uh. The bid process, you gotta issue a bid sheet, you gotta issue, you know, the whole nine yards, it's gonna have to be done and then start the process. And I would say that you're early enough, if we're talking July one of next year. If you get some prices now locked in, you're gonna know what you have to budget and whatever.
You also need to keep in mind that now, now that there is municipal buildings fund that is established, if that money in that line item does not get. Utilized for maintenance during that year, at the end of the fiscal year, you folks do have the authority to approve a transfer. Of that money to be put. Into probably, right, exactly.
Yeah, the highway fund?
That's another story.
So I'll go ahead, I'll I'll make the motion that we begin and advise Ashley to start the process of putting together a bid sheet and. Um, now, when Mr. Bixby was on the board, there was always a policy that nobody ever wanted this building. Pressure washed and that they wanted it scraped only, which if that's the case and that's gonna remain the same, that's an important item for the bid sheet. And I will tell you, that's what drives the price up astronomically on painting this building, if there's not a willingness to let it be pressure washed.
My concern has always been.
Well, my concern has always been that the wood that's on the outside has got some years on it. And a lot of it, it's not covered with some committed paint at this point, is getting pretty well waterlogged, I would guess, and so. I'm not sure the advantage of scraping in that situation, I mean, pressure washing, I don't think is gonna do any more hurt than it's already there. Uh I I have no pro- problem with thinking about pressure washing as an alternative, but I understand the scraping. I mean, and the other consideration that Cash brings up of uh vinyl. I mean, will the issue or use of vinyl siding damage the nature of the historic part of this building? I suspect not at this point.
Because when we took the slate roof off.
That did it right there.
That killed it.
Yeah.
Now they're not considering it a porch.
So obviously the vinyl will last longer, but if you use vinyl and you have wood that's waterlogged behind it. Then what do you got two?
It goes back to, it's like a slate roof.
Yeah.
If you maintain it.
You got a good roof.
It's gonna last, if 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 you let it go, like we let this go now ten years.
Exactly.
I, because I'm predicting, if you look it up, my guess is it was probably about ten years ago, the last painting was done on this building.
And it was this side.
Art Knox sat in George's chair, so it's been, it's been quite a while.
Yes.
So, I mean, the reality is, again, start the bid process, I personally would agree with you, I don't think that. Pressure washing's gonna do any further damage than anything else, and the reality is, right now, this building is so dirty. That I think it needs a pressure wash to get it where it needs to be. Um but that's, again, that's a board that was kind of an unwritten rule for a long time, so. I g- I don't, and what we had offered on the table, and I agreed with Bob with back then, was the fire department wanted to come in and spray it down. I did not agree with that, so that was one thing we talked about once upon a time, but and I, we're not talking that, I I. I'm saying a, an actual pressure washing, you know, get the, get the flaking paint, they're still gonna have to scrape.
Yeah.
And then the building's gonna be painted.
Okay, I'll go along with that.
Guess I just made a motion.
I just seconded. I did, I seconded it.
Alright, so there's been motion made, seconded, we've had some conversation. For about ten minutes now, is there any other points anybody wants to make? If not, all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
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 Ask a question?
Yep.
So, are we also trying to get more vinyl siding bits?
Personally, I don't think it's worth the time.
No.
I think it's a waste of time, but that's me.
Well, I tend to agree, I just. You know, that that, you know, there is, vinyl siding should last a very long time, but again, with underneath it. What kind of problems we got there, I don't know.
I mean, we we took one stab at it a year, two years ago, was it a year ago?
Before me.
And it was well over a hundred thousand dollars.
One bid.
So. I I, that's where I would be at.
Alright, moving ahead, did you get your question answered?
Yes, thank you.
Um, just looping around, just because it was part of the discussion, the furnace discussion.
Yes.
Has there been, has efficiency Vermont themselves been in to tell you what the options are?
Not yet, no, that's where they, that's what I believe will be happening next, and that's through our RPC.
Oh, you can't just call them?
I can, let's see what they say.
I I, if it was just me, I'd just call efficiency, because Megan will come down.
Yeah.
And she lives in town, and just, yeah, I mean, they. And and I realize it's all based on what the rebates are and what they're funding at this time, but um. There's a lot of incentives still when it comes to shifting. Especially since the state's pushing as many people as they can away from number two, fuel oil, so um. I mean, full transparency, that's how we went to pellets at the school, I mean, it was just, there was, there was big money available for pellet. Shifting the pellets. And there was federal money on top of the local, on on top of the state money. So, I mean, I'm not saying that we have to go pellets, but we should, we should look at all the options.
Pellets aren't getting in cheaper either.
No, they're not, but.
Wicked. Alright, town officers report.
I think I said about him the first night.
Roy, you have anything?
I have nothing tonight.
Kevin. Yes.
I, just a question, I did get a quote from Dana from Hellfire for an outdoor spigot. And is that something that can?
How much was it?
Five hundred.
How much?
Five hundred. It was an up to five hundred, and I do have that, is that something that?
Where would, where would this be installed?
Uh outside faucet, frosty, frost free outside faucet within twenty feet of well tank with independent shut-off valve, so. You know, who are, who are extra your wall down here.
We're gonna need it if you're gonna do pressure washing.
Yeah. Yep.
Or even to be able to, you know, wash the memorial stuff that we have out front.
It's under, it's within the purchasing policy, it's under the amount that requires further a lot.
I just wanted to bring it up, just.
Well, you people are are down here in the building all the time. I mean, Cash, what do you think, something like that?
Yeah, I mean, like, if we're going to the painting, stuff like that, pressure washing, that we.
Yeah, make a motion that we add the stupid spigot, what's the big deal? Alright, there's been a motion made on a super stupid spigot, and whatever the hell he says. And second, and all of them favoring motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, Cash, you have any concerns?
Uh I've had a couple individuals contact me about their concern about having fifty-four students graduate from. Mill River High School with the increase of educational tax like that, and I. I su- suggest that I talk to Heidi and Ashley about it, and their suggestion was they, these people they're concerned need to talk to the school board. Go from there.
Yep, that's right.
Anything else, Cash? George?
Yes, I do have something scarier than they seem, uh. Regards to last meeting's conversation we had concerning the traffic concerns of our. Senator, I think he's still here, yes.
Yes, he is.
In terms of speed and and attention to that particular part of town by the officers. During the discussion, uh the several board members, including me, made suggestions and questions and made suggestions. If you look at this contract that we have with the sheriff, it says number seven on the last sheet. Says the town manager slash liaison shall serve as the administrator of this agreement, so my question is, what does that mean? And the second thing is, what should the role of the liaison be? Now, what I've done in the since I've been elected is I've had two conversations with the deputy in terms of. Hello, how are you, and how are things going, and what can I do, or what can you do, just kind of a, how's it going? Conversation, but nothing too specific, and what came up in the last meeting was suggestions that the liaison ought to do something or not. And I wasn't clear exactly what was expected from the folks that were making those suggestions, and I'm happy to do anything. I know that in the past, since I've been elected, either uh Ashley or Heidi have done the work with the uh. Communication with the sheriff's office, which is fine, but, so I guess my question is, and Bob is here. You had a job when you were here as the liaison, if I remember correctly, and what was your role, what was your responsibilities?
Not too much.
So I guess, well, I.
I was gonna say, because like you say, we heavily relied on the admin admin assistant to make those phone calls if need be. But I think that one of the things is, is that it's published in the town report, so that if people have specific concerns and want to reach out to you directly. They can contact you directly.
Yes, which hasn't happened.
Which, yeah, it depends on when, when and where that happens, I think.
I've had other contacts, but nothing to do with.
Yeah.
That that issues, so, I I guess the only thing I could suggest, if you wanna have a general discussion on a future agenda to. Discuss the issue, I'd be happy to do that, or if you wanna let things keep uh limping along as they are, that's fine with me too.
I think what's working now is working, so let's just.
Okay.
I mean, we we do, it's not a documented process, but we have a process. I mean, if something comes in, it's ultimately gonna be either you or Ashley that are gonna make the phone call.
I guess that could be true.
Okay, have food?
I'm done.
I'm done.
I I do not have anything tonight, no.
I got nothing. Alright.
So move.
All of them favor?